We told you that at the beginning of the year, when we first preached, that we are going back to our foundation. Where are we going? And we're really glad it's gonna be needful that we go back to our foundation and really reconsider and re-study some things. Because there are some lessons that we missed, some lessons that we are lacking, and some messages that we're really gonna have to grasp as we go into the new Apostolic Flow. Somebody say Apostolic Flow.
Apostolic Flow.
Amen. I'm talking about changing to Apostolic Church. We're talking about moving to the Apostolic Flow, which is the Flow of Acts. Amen. The church today, the church for the Lord, when I say the church, I mean the Lord, Jesus Christ Body should replicate the Book of Acts. Amen. We should see the same results that the apostles saw after their Pentecost. Amen. That there were signs, wonders, and miracles following the priest's word. Somebody say signs.
Signs.
Wonders.
Wonder.
Miracles.
Miracles.
Following the priest's word.
Following the priest's word.
Amen. We need to have that. I don't understand where that ever ceased to be. I think we've got so wrapped up in denominationalism and different things that we kinda left that. Get off of prosperity, get off of faith, and all that's wonderful. I think it's all part of the Holy Word. However, there are things that the body is lacking that causes us to need to return to our roots. And our roots are the move of the Holy Ghost. And just to tell you, the Holy Spirit is an Apostolic Spirit. Hallelujah. Amen. He is an Apostolic Spirit. Because Apostle just said to me, one of the sent, amen, that God sent the Holy Spirit to be a teacher for us, to lead and to guide us into all truth. Amen. And so we're gonna continue on tonight talking about grace and repentance. Very important, very important subjects of the kingdom. And we should have a good grasp of grace and repentance. Grace is the unmerited, undeserved, unbought, unpurchisable goodness of God. That's what it is. It's just God's goodness, the grace of God. And the grace of God is not a thing. The grace of God is a person. The grace of God is Jesus. Say amen.
Amen.
The grace of God is Jesus, personified. And everything that Jesus touches in the Word of God represents the grace of God. If you are healed, you are healed because of grace. We are not healed because we deserve it. We don't deserve it. You don't deserve it. You don't deserve to be healed. God just graces you enough to heal you. Amen. And prosperity touches your life. You don't deserve prosperity. Just prosper because God is good. Amen. So grace touches every part of our life, and it should because Jesus should touch every part of our life. Amen. So let's get a good understanding of the essence of repentance as we study God's Word. Biblical repentance is a change of mind, change of heart, and change of direction. So the catalyst of repentance has to be changed. Something has to change. We live in a society where people don't wanna change. They want to come to the house of God, they wanna come to the altar, they feel their auction, and then they want to accept Jesus, or they want Jesus to accept them just as they are. And He does. But He does desire us to stay as we are. But the society we're living in now, old, young, black, white, millennial, non-millennial, post-millennial, geez, whatever you call yourself, we are not living in a society that wants to change, we want to stay the same. We wanna come to the altar, say we accepted Jesus, walk away, and keep drinking, keep smoking, keep living together, keep playing the lottery, you know, keep cussing, and all that stuff. But there has to be a defined, recognizable change in our lives if we have repented the way God instructed us to.
Amen.
Amen. If any man be in Christ, he is a repentant. You don't get a Jesus, really get Jesus stayed the same. That's impossible. That is literally utterly impossible for us to have an encounter with Jesus and stay the same.
Amen.
Not possible. Just by virtue of the fact of who He is.
Amen.
It's impossible. Biblical repentance is a change of heart, change of mind, change of direction. It's a change of mind about who Jesus is. If we really come to God and understand who Jesus is, we will change. We'll change. It's a change of mind about who Jesus is and what He has done for us, which leads us to turn away from our old lifestyle. Is repentance a work? No, it's not. Because if it was work, it wouldn't be faith. Repentance is an action. It's a verb, it's an actual word. We repent, we change, we change directions. We turn from darkness to light. We turn from sin to righteousness. And it is a 180-degree turn, not a 360-degree turn. A 360-degree turn turns me right back where I was. But a 180-degree turn turns me from where I'm at to Him. So I got to change, 'cause I turned my back on my old way. Critical understanding, that we are saved by faith alone. That's all. Not faith and going to church. And we should go to church for saying, "God, there's something of yourself together," as the man himself is. We should go to the house of the Lord because it is ordained of God for spiritual strength and encouragement. We get encouraged when we come to the house of the Lord. We hear Cordaeus' testimony, how God delivered him in the midst of what the world would consider a horrific event.
Yeah.
We come and hear Sheree's testimony, how God prospered her business. She'll give her, elder Cordaeus' testimony about where they came from. Won't share it now, they'll share it when they themselves. But I saw where they came from. And also saw what God can do if you apply the biblical principles. And they did some repenting along the way, but they changed. We are saved by Jesus, His sacrifice, His blood, His vicarious duties on the cross, and nothing else. Nothing else. Somebody say, "Nothing else."
Nothing else.
And it is God that grants us repentance. You don't just repent 'cause you feel good, preacher preached good, choir was jamming, drumroll was beating, ushers were dressed up nice, nice robes. No, you and I repented because God gave it to our heart to do it. Well, there pastor, where would you find that in the Scriptures? Okay, let's turn. 2 Timothy 2. Amen. 2 Timothy 2. Amen. Amen. 2 Timothy 2 and 24. What do you have to say?
Have it.
Amen. "The servant of the Lord must not strive, but be gentle to some men, to all men." You have to be careful when you learn a couple of Scriptures. Because it has a tendency to make you puffed up and go after people when you start discussing the Scriptures. Sometimes because people are less educated in Scriptures about you, not as after the Scriptures as we are. You have to be careful not to wound them, interrupt them. Sometimes you can talk with people and they all say something that's totally foolish. If you put together 15 Scriptures in the Bible, they couldn't add what they're talking about. And you have every opportunity in the world to cut them, but you have to have mercy. You can't strive with people, but you must be what? Gentle. Servant of the Lord must be gentle. You have to be gentle with people. We're living in an age where people are not coming to this house that look like us. They're coming with purple hair, green hair, flaming red hair, yellow hair, multicolored rainbow hair. They're coming with piercings in every part of their body. They're coming in jeans with no belt, with underwear showing. They're coming in maybe barefooted. They're coming in, they're gonna sit in your seat, or whichever figure's your seat, but they do not know kingdom protocol, they don't know church protocol. And so we must be gentle with those people. And we do not have the right to reject them from coming to the house of the Lord. But this is not our house. This is God's house. And if they cannot come here and get help, where else can they go? This is really not a house for the righteous. It's a house for sinners to get saved and to get healed. It's a hospital for the sick, both physically and spiritually. It's a house. It's a hospital. Yeah, yeah. "Servant of the Lord must not strive, but be gentle unto all men, able to teach." Able to teach. Somebody say, "Able to teach." But you cannot teach what you do not know. And that does not, saints of God, that does not just mean the preaching. I shouldn't be the only one teaching, or able to teach. Y'all should be able to teach too. I found out, I found out on a great revelation, Ellen. I found out through a wise man, and I don't name names on you two, but I found out from a wise man, here's the protocol. I've got to teach you all to teach others. So when this church goes 500,000, 2,000, 3,000 posts, I don't have to be with everybody. I can release somebody off. 'Cause we're teaching the same thing, we believe the same thing, we've learned the same thing, and we're speaking the same thing. Able to teach. You have to be patient with folks. Somebody was patient with you. Somebody was patient with me. Somebody was patient with us. Somebody will continue to be patient with us. Somebody say, "Patient." You have to be patient with people. In meekness, instructing, that means teaching, those that oppose themselves. Most of the time, people oppose their own lives, their own salvation, their own help. They're opposing themselves. They're fighting themselves. I was talking to somebody at a job, and I hit on the fact that I have taught in the past and will teach again real soon, the lessons of forgiveness. And they began to cry and say, "I'd never heard of that." But I went through an episode like that with my mother a few years ago, that I've been holding something against her since I was 15 years old. And finally, one day, God dealt with me and said, "You have to forgive her, even if she doesn't forgive you, you have to forgive her. Because what I'm asking you to do is for you, it's not for her." Isn't God so marvelous that He allows individuals to hold stuff for years and not die, and not get cut off, and not get killed with that unforgiveness, and not sin and fall with this sin in us of unforgiveness? People ask, "Why do bad things happen to good people?" That is a question that is age-old and is pronunciated. Why do bad things happen to good people? My question is, whose standard are you using to say they're good people? Because you don't know them like God does. Now, the Bible says, "There's not a just man on earth who doeth good and sitteth not, for all have come short." So as our beloved pastor says, all of us are just a bunch of jacked-up jokers trying to love Jesus. Every one of us. Every one of us have done something, doing something, or gonna do something that displeases God after one. All of us. Not a perfect one amongst us. Not a sinners one amongst us. So we have to be patient with people. We have to be meek with people. We have to teach those that oppose themselves. If peradventure, will God give them repentance? Who gives repentance?
God.
Oh, and we thought it just happened. Look at them sitting back there just crying. They want Jesus. No, what's happened is God's dealing with their heart. God's dealing with their spirit. God is dealing with the intellect. And He's washed away all of that draughts. And He's dealing with their mind, He's dealing with their soul, He's dealing with their conscience, dealing with their intellect. And so He's compelling them to go and receive their Son. Not because they want to, but because He has given them a revelation about how bad they are and how good His Son has been.
Amen.
It's not hell that brought us to Jesus. 'Cause some of us are so tough that we, I'm gonna have a party in hell with my boys and drink some liquor, smoke some weed, have all these women in hell. Not knowing the only thing you go on in hell is them to turn down the heat and turn up the air conditioning. Or give me a fan or something, and I'll fan, but all you go fan is flame. Peradventure, will God give them repentance to the acknowledging of what? Acknowledging of truth. "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free." Doesn't set you free, it makes you free. 'Cause if it sets you free, it could be recaptured again, but it makes you free. He whom the sun set, the whom the sun makes free, is free indeed. You're free. Somebody say, "I'm free."
I'm free.
Amen. Verse 26, "That they may recover themselves..." Oh boy, recover themselves. So God's not gonna do everything. Jesus is not gonna do everything. The Holy Spirit is not gonna do everything. Sometimes we have to recover ourselves. You have to come to yourself. The prodigal son came, the Bible says, "Came to himself." He said, "I'm laying down here with the swine, eating the husk, eating whatever the swine leave." Now, they already getting the worst of the worst off the table. I'm eating whatever they leave. I'm smelling like them, I'm looking like them. I done started snorting like them. And I'm living with the swine. And my father's rich. My father got sermons that live better than I do. Man, I'm coming to myself. I'm getting up in here, I'm going back to my daddy's house. And that's what compels the sinner to come to God. When I think of the goodness of Jesus and all that He's... Have you ever just thought about what Jesus has done for you? And how things could've turned out? Things might be a little rough, but how bad things could be? Or how bad things were some years ago? Robin Peter to Pay Paul. Eat and wish I had some meat sandwiches. Toasted bread, wish you had some meat. Mind not to add cheese. It's toasted bread. Makes you a little, that's what makes you a little full. Sugar water, can't afford a bottle. Put a little lemon in, make a lemonade. You really realize how good God has blessed all of them. Hurting, but one day you're gonna get better. There's hope of a tree if it can just get the sin of water. There's hope. Somebody say, "Hope." "That they will recover themselves out of the snare of the devil, who are taken captive by Him at His will." Don't be so hard on sinners. The devil does whatever he wants for them. Makes them do whatever he wills. Makes them go wherever he wills. Makes them say whatever he wills. They're captive at His will. I wanted, you know, I've had unfortunate privilege seeing some good friends pass off in the glory here recently, both nationally and locally. And it's a thought that crosses my mind every time I know somebody goes in to save and sanctify, living clean, living holy. And then you look over here, and this jacked-up joker is doing whatever he or she wants to do. And God allows them to live. But I see in that the long-suffering forbearance, mercy, tender loving kindness of God. Because He won't let them go because they're not ready. Because it's not His will that they should perish. But all should come to repentance and the knowledge of truth. So next time, you think about that, you have a good friend, saving, living for God, running for Jesus, speaking in tongues and paying their tithes and offering, and God calls them in. But I discovered something when I listened to Sister Evan's testimony. And we've heard it, First Lady Walker and I have heard it more than one time, that God, Mother, will give you a glimpse of heaven. And you don't wanna come. 'Cause when that catcher came back and reoccurred in Sister Laura's evidence, and she finally saw that God was going to heal her by taking her home, and her and her husband had a conversation, she said, "Let me go." He said, "I don't want that you know." He said, "Let me know." Because it's not fair for you to try to keep me here, God's asking me to come there. She said, "Y'all see my mother sitting over there by the fireplace? She's looking at that." Y'all see my mother sitting over there? They see something we don't see. I say that, I ain't talking about the wicked. Wicked might be hollering screaming when they see the flames. Or the demons. We've heard that testimony time and time again, that God pulls back the curtain and gives you a glimpse over into glory. And they say it's a peace that passes, or I think that's the peace He's talking about, that passes all of them standing. And once you feel that, and you look in there, and you look back here, oh no, I'm going over here. Apostle says, "Be also ready." It's not that you're going, it's already ready to go. And that's what repentance does. It keeps us in a ready state of ready to go home, if it's called. Man, I can go and my soul is clear that I haven't offended anybody. And if I've offended somebody, I've attempted to get it right. 'Cause I'm not responsible for you forgiving me, I'm responsible for you forgiving you. God is good. Amen. John 6:44. John 6:44. Amen. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Somebody say, "Thank the Lord."
Thank the Lord.
Amen. 6:44. Six. Yeah. What do you have to say? Jesus says, "No man." Somebody say, "No man."
No man.
Look at that verse that's next to you, it say, "Not even you." "No man can come to Me except the Father, which has sent Me draw him." So God has to draw us to Jesus. So we see people come and fear of us. Know the kind of person, know the kind of life person they're born and set to Jesus. 'Cause God has not drawn them. And they can't just come. Man, it's giving me a whole new perspective on why people don't do stuff. God is all in this thing. God has to draw you. He has to deal with your conscience. But there must first be a willing mind. It's according to what a man had and not what he hadn't. Not according to what you don't have. It's according to a willing mind. Do you have a willing mind to want Jesus? Do you want Him? Do you want to change? Do you want to be different? And amazingly or not, many don't. Repentance is a result of true salvation in Jesus Christ. True faith, true repentance will make you new. Because God is commanding all men to repent and to believe on what His Son, Jesus Christ, is about. He's commanding. I say command, He's not asking us to repent, He's commanding. All right. Let's continue. Praise the Lord. Luke 15. Luke 15. How good is God? How good is God? How good is God to you? Incredible that a God could be so awesome until to Him, all of us are His number-one son and number-one woman. That He would leave all y'all to come get me. That He left many of our family members and came and got us. Okay, all right. John 15. And four, I mean, I'm sorry, Luke. 15 and four. Luke 15 and four. "What man of you, Jesus says, having a hundred sheep, if he loses one of them, do not leave the ninety-nine in the wilderness and go after that which is lost until he finds it." You know God will search for us until they find us? But what He wants to find, He wants to find us in a state of repentance. He wants to find us in a state of crying out for help. Lord, there's nobody like You, forgive me, Lord. I appreciate the fact that You love me. I'm not repenting because I'm scared, I'm not repenting because I'm afraid to go to hell. I'm repenting because I recognize how absolutely wonderful and fantastically good You are. That I don't deserve anything You've done to me. And to think that You love me enough to come and get me. I'm just compelled to repent. Because I want to remain in good standing with You, Lord. That's what repentance does. It remains us in a perpetual state of good standing. What man, having a hundred sheep, wanted to lose, has lost one? Somebody say, "Lose one." If he lost me, I wouldn't be lost, but if I got lost, He's come to find me. And isn't that comforting? To know that out of multiple millions and millions and millions and millions and millions and millions and millions of Christians, that if you get lost and lose your way, He will come and find you? He cares for me? Oh, how He care? And He'll go after that which is lost until He finds it. He's not gonna give up. Not gonna need you hanging. And when He has found it, He lays it on His shoulders rejoicing. Lord, have mercy. He's up to come and find you and beat us? Come. What happened when the prodigal son came home? His father saw him, seen the fur off. The boy came, running. Ran into his father's arm. His father hugged him and welcomed him home. Had a feast for him. Had a roll with him, had a rainfall. Restored him back to his former position as part of the family. As far as the father was concerned, he would never have been excommunicated from the family. The boy excommunicated himself. He took his stuff and went off and lived in riotous, hanging in the club, making it rain. Had a lot of friends while he was making it rain. But soon as the rain stopped, his friends stopped. And that's the way it is with us. People come to the kingdom, get a job. Don't steal nothing. Come to the kingdom, get healed. Don't steal nothing. Come to the kingdom... Come to the kingdom, get a marriage story. Don't steal nothing. And when he finds it, lays it on his shoulder rejoicing. And when he comes home, he calls together his friends and neighbors, saying to them, "Rejoice with me, for I have found my sheep, which was lost." My sheep. Personal relationship. That's what this society lacks, it lacks a personal relationship. It has a relationship with church. Has a relationship with its denomination, but it lacks a personal relationship with Jesus Christ, the Lord of lords and kings of kings and kings. Somebody say, "Personal relationship."
Personal relationship.
Yeah, that I may know him. In the power of his resurrection and fellowship of his suffering, that I may know him, that I may know him. What you know about Jesus? Say that name, for you, for those who. What you know about Jesus? He's all right? He's all right? He's all right with me? Yeah. All right, all right, all right? Verse seven, I say to you, "That likewise joy shall be in heaven over a multitude of servants, over a thousand servants, over a hundred million servants, over one sinner that does what? Repent. Gets it right with God. Gets in good position to fellowship with God. That's what repentance does with you. Repentance don't save you, it keeps you in the right position. It keeps you in the face of the Father. It keeps the ears of the Father open to our cry. It keeps the Father in a posture to be able to bless us. Keeps us in the Father's view, so he can lead and guide us by his Spirit. Saying to you, "Likewise joy shall be in heaven over one sinner that repented more than over ninety and nine persons, which need no repentance." Oh, have mercy. Everybody don't need the same attention in the kingdom. The way you have to kill that spirit of jealousy. Everybody don't need the same attention. Babies need a whole lot more attention than you older jokers. That should know at least two scriptures by now, if not three. Amen. Boy, I'm learning, I'm learning a lot. I'm learning, I'm learning a lot, I'm coming for y'all. I'm learning a lot. Learned a lot about my elders, my leaders. Amen. Praise the Lord. We're gonna get this, we'll get this down, this foundation down pat. Amen. And we will get it down pat right now, before this house gets full. Because it's gonna get full. Amen. Praise God. Hallelujah. Got time for one more scripture. Amen. Hallelujah. Make it two. I don't know which one I wanna do. Amen. You wanna do two? Say, "Do," say, "Do two, Apostle, then." Amen. Thank God, do two. Amen. Praise God. True repentance leads to regret, godly sorrow, and turning toward sin. Counterfeit repentance is never sorrow. Just sorry got caught. Amen. Godly sorrow works repentance. Not to be repented of. Again, godly repentance works change. Somebody say, "Change." Yeah, can't change with a capital C. Amen. Amen. Second Corinthians seven. Second Corinthians seven. Amen. Praise the Lord. This is good. Yeah? I know you want two, I just may be able to finish one. Amen. But it's gonna be good. Second Corinthians seven and ten. Amen. What do you have to say? Amen. "For godly sorrow worketh repentance." Somebody say, "Repentance." "To salvation, not to be repented of, but the sorrow of the world worketh death. Behold, this still same thing that we sorrowed after a godly sorrow." Here's what it brought, here's what godly repentance brought. Oh, what carefulness. Somebody say, "Carefulness." "I begin to be more careful about what I say and do, where I go, who I go with, how I look when I go, what I say when I go." Say, "Carefulness." Number one, careful. Number two, in guarding us, yea, what clarion.